Okay, and it looks like we have everybody, so let's get started with roll call.
Commissioner Jack Shaw.
President.
Commissioner Krieger.
President.
Commissioner Halleck.
President.
Commissioner Burton.
Here.
Commissioner Wood.
Here.
Vice Chair Hayward.
Here I am.
Chairman Donaldson.
Here. Okay, welcome everyone. We'll start off with the consent agenda to adopt the September 9th, 2020 Planning Commission meeting minutes. If I, I will entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion that we accept as submitted.
Thank you.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, moving on to the next item is public comment. Anyone wishing to address the commission on matters not appearing on the agenda may do so now.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
If I might, would you just for the record go to public comment really quickly on the previous item, just so we can note whether or not anybody had on the consent item?
Oh, I'm sorry. On the consent agenda, going back to item 2A, do we have any public comment? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on to public comments. Anyone wishing to address the commission can do so now. Karen, do you see any hands? I don't see any.
I don't. Randy is running. Do you see any hands raised?
No. No, there's none.
Okay.
Then we'll move on to item four, which is reports, the building activity report for September and October of 2020. Any comments?
Chairman, I have a comment.
Yes.
There's a few items in here that have had final inspection. They just didn't get noted. They crossed over.
Okay.
One of them is 924 via Verde.
Got it.
Okay.
Okay, thank you for that update.
Yeah.
Any other questions about the building activity report? Comments? Okay, seeing none. Old business, item number five, we have none. Move on to new business, item 6A. The applicant's name is the Delray Oaks Garden Center, and it is file number ARC 20-03 and CUP 14-08, and it is requesting an architectural review to receive after the fact permission for a fence previously erected to amend the hours of operations listed in the original conditional use permit.
And Mr. Chair.
I'll turn it over to our city manager.
And Mr. Chair, I've got to step down on this, so I will mute.
Okay.
Chair Donaldson and commissioners, thank you very much, citizens, city attorney, and everyone else. I just want to say it's a pleasure to be here as your acting city manager, and thank you for this opportunity.
I'm so sorry to interrupt. Could I ask Commissioner Jack Shaw to also turn his video off as well, if he's recusing himself for conflict reasons? Not that I don't love you, George, but that's standard protocol. Sorry to interrupt.
No, by all means. That's why you're here, to interrupt when you need to. Today's action is the amendment of conditionally used permit 1408. The applicant's name, of course, is Delray Oaks Garden Center. One thing I'd like to do is draw attention to the city staff report. The agenda item and the staff report are related, and the project description requesting architectural review to receive after the fact permission for the fence and also to amend hours of operation. If you look in the staff report with the project description, the recommended action from city staff is to actually approve the conditional use permit with the conditions of approval recommended below in the staff report. Analyze provided material, make appropriate findings, and also to impose conditions as appropriate in given direction to staff. And I just want to make sure that the parameters of what the use permit in amendment, or the amendment for the use permit entails. The conditions suggested by staff are one, that he must satisfactorily renegotiate the lease with the city prior to opening additional Sundays. This, of course, is going to also be necessary because any change in the footprint of the property, if it's approved, would also need to be documented in the new lease agreement. The lease area boundary shall be subject to change if the Fortag Trail project routing requires it. I believe that the position of the staff is that there needs to be some sort of mechanism in the lease agreement that will allow Fortag and Tamsi to route Fortag through the property as needed as an agreement to any new lease that we would negotiate with the Garden Center. Three, the city has recommended that we no longer allow any lawnmower or other mechanical repair permitted on the premises. And the applicant shall maintain a public access trail with clear signage, free of debris along the creek around the premises. The current trail there is what that refers to. And as you'll note, the city has put up a better access gate there where there was one that allows better access for the trail use for our citizens and then continued use and cleanliness of that area is important. I will open up to any questions that the commission has for staff at this point, and be glad to answer any before we move further.
Okay, for the planning commissioners, any questions for the city manager?
Yeah.
Go ahead, Garrett.
Yeah, can we, so is it appropriate time now? I'm going to dive into a few things in here. At this time, I'll do it now. Okay, so, a couple of questions about the shed. Curious about, so was the shed part of the original lease? Is that the print, was the shed part of the original lease?
It's within the leased area. You know, I wasn't there for the negotiation of the lease itself, and I think that's why this is a timely matter, is a lot of the specific conditions aren't clear in the previous lease, and I think this is a good, possibly a good mechanism should we get direction to clear that up and solidify those terms.
Okay, so that's kind of what I figured. So then, I guess my real question was, was the repair activity authorized? Was that something that was, or was it even addressed in the lease? I mean, how was that property, the shaker treated? Do you know if it was, was it that the, this repair activity was going to be what was happening there?
You know, Commissioner Krieger, I would have to try and find the original lease behind my desk somewhere to read through that. I read through it, but I don't remember any provisions specifically about lawnmower repair.
Okay, well, that kind of probably, that was kind of what I was expecting the answer to be. I would just say then addressing, I would think we still need to talk some more about that. You know, when down there, I know, I'm sure most everyone has too, it's a mess. I mean, there's broken dilapidated machinery everywhere. There's oil. And every time it rains, you know exactly where all that's going. It's just going right into the creek. I think just stopping, saying it's not permitted to repair, I don't think it's strong enough. I think, yeah, I don't know if we need to get rid of the shed. I don't know if that's necessarily, but we certainly need to get all that dilapidated, old, broken down machinery out of there, all those mowers and everything else. And I think there needs to be some stipulation about cleaning up the ground. Now, there's just, I got pictures of them. There's just oil laying on the ground, and I think this is a good opportunity, like you say. I think this is a great opportunity to clean that up a little bit and take a little bit of care of our creek. Because I don't, I suspect that was not probably what was intended initially, just sort of evolved into this. But now that we have the chance to maybe rectify that, we should. I don't think we should miss this opportunity.
So Commissioner Krieger, if I could respond?
Yeah, please.
Absolutely. So, you know, in speaking with the city attorney, we, you know, from the city manager viewpoint, the staff viewpoint is sticking to the agenda and what the staff report says. I have reached out to Maury, and we've spoken on several occasions about, you know, the long-term outcome of that shed in that area. As a matter of fact, I've met with Aaron Harwayne from Denise Duffy Associates. We've gone out there and looked at that shed. We've gone out and looked at the footprint of the entire amended CUP locations right now to get an assessment of environmental. I've reached out to Maury and talked about the possibility of changing the use of that particular lot. I think what I, what I envision as a strategy moving forward is working on the simple steps that we've outlined here. And then, once we start renegotiating that contract, we make those stipulations in the contract for approval by city council at, you know, because they're not, some of those farther reaching items are not listed on the agenda or in the staff report.
Okay, I understand your, yeah.
And I think.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
And I think there's a lot of room for movement in that area. I think we're, there's a lot of good faith in trying to resolve this situation and continue to have a professional business while making it better for the environment and accessible for Fortag to come through in a timely and efficient manner.
Chair Donaldson, might I speak to that?
Sure.
So I think the, to sort of set the stage in how we might think of this as a conditional, conditional use permit. So in other words, you have the, what was applied for, which was the fencing and the hours of operation. And is staff's opinion that before that's granted, you know, certain improvements and things be made, and you've got a list there. So, you know, tonight won't be, well, I suppose it's within the discretion of the planning commission to just approve it, but staff's recommendation is to, is to sort of approve the, approve it conditionally. That is to say, you know, you can have these few things, but we need to talk about a few other things as well. So if it's the pleasure of the planning commission, what we could do is, you know, just say these things are granted, you know, what was asked for is granted. But again, to be conditional upon some further negotiation with the city manager. And for instance, the lease has to be approved by the council. So I think if, if I didn't make it more muddy, I hope to sort of phrase it like, you know, this is, we're conditioning this conditional use permit on a few things that staff thinks is really important. And I think the direction, if it's the pleasure of the commission, would be to say, you know, these things can be approved, but subject to staff's recommendation to go and work out some of these details.
Right, and ultimately, what we want to do is give the city manager everything he needs to renegotiate that lease. Now, that said, what's in the scope of the planning commission are really three things. It's the lease boundary, the potential Fortag Trail, and making sure there's a stipulation which is within the lease that talks to that, and then also the hours. Now, there are additional items. Gary has brought up some great points about the creek and the shed. What I would like to do is also hear those comments, because the city manager needs to have that in mind as he goes through and renegotiates that lease. But really, what we're looking to do as a planning commission is focus on those three items. So as we move through, just keep that in mind, but I don't want that to stop any of the commissioners and any of the public from bringing forward information or comments that can help the city manager when he ultimately renegotiates, if that makes sense.
It does, Chairman. If I could just follow on what was being said, though, a couple of things that come to mind. I don't see that much difference between saying no more mechanical repair shall be permitted and just going a little further and saying, remove the broken down machinery and clean the oil off the ground. I mean, it's not that much more of a step. We're in the process of negotiating. It's a good time to ask for that. We're not saying take the shed down necessarily, or we're just saying clean up the mess that's there. Because here's the thing, we just got our first rain. It hopefully is going to be raining more often. Now's the time to get this, you know, cleaned up. And right now, we got the, we're in a negotiation. That's what a negotiation is for. So I would say if you're going to say, don't, you know, no more repair activity, well, just take it a little bit further. Say, you've already opened the door. Take it a little bit further. And say, let's get the broken stuff out of there. Let's get the oil off the ground before it starts raining, all that stuff starts washing into the creek, because that's where it's going to go. That would be, that would be my comment about the, you know, about the mower and the, what's going with the shed. I think it's a good chance. I think we're missing an opportunity not to have a little better situation before the rainy season comes.
And I don't know if I mentioned, I figured, I didn't mean to interrupt Commissioner Krieger if I did.
Oh, no, 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 it's all good.
I'd like to point out that Aaron Harwayne from Denise Duffy and Associates is, I don't know if I pointed out, she is here tonight to answer any questions regarding the environmental, you know, impact of whether it's the shed or what would have to be done in the future with that or foreseeable, but also the, what appeared to be the minimal impact of the drawing outside, the, you know, coloring outside the lines that has already gone on with the encroachment on the city's property. So if you, if you need information, she is here as a resource. Thank you, Denise. Or thank you, Aaron.
Okay, Gary, do you have any more questions for the city manager?
Not about the staff report, you know, I do have some more, a couple more when we get to talking about Mr. Maury's letter. But as far as that, I just think we should, I would just put out that I think we should at least consider that number three, making that a little bit more, just taking it a little bit further, making it a little more meaningful, while we have the opportunity. I mean, that's what a negotiation is for, right? So.
Okay. The rest of the commission, any further questions for the city manager at this point? And then I'll give you the opportunity. I'll go around and everybody will be able to give their comments. But at this point, any specific comments or questions for the city manager? Okay, I see none. Karen, any, do you see anyone? Okay, with that then, Commissioner Burton, I'll go to you first. Please.
Ken Rutherford has his hand up. Sorry.
We'll have a chance for public comment. I want to make sure the commissioners get the opportunity first. Go ahead, Commissioner Burton.
I just want to thank the Garden Center owners and the people that work on that for their interest in trying to make, I read the letter and I read over the whole package, and I think it has a, I think the heart of the group is there, and it aligns with what Delray Oaks kind of likes in our community. So I'm a big fan of the intent, and I'm a big fan of them being a good tenant to begin with. And that's all I have.
Okay, thank you. I'll move on then to Commissioner Hayward. Any comments?
Yeah, there was Gary's comments about the shed. Originally, this was, the original people that wanted to go in there was tobs, and that, for some reason, fell apart. And in the original use permit, or what they wanted to do, they were calling that a saw shop. And so it was, had, that building was there, and it was, they were originally going to do repairs. So just to clarify that for Gary, it's my recollection from that whole deal. With regard to the, we had the letter from the one citizen, and, sorry, my buddy just interfered here. And the comments about noise. I know we had talked about that originally when we agreed to let them go in there, and talked about having the trucks come at certainly certain times of day, and to make sure that they were only, when they're coming up the hill, that they only made right turns, and if they're going down the hill, that they only made right turns down, so they're not crossing traffic. And also, now that the road is coming in from the back, I want to make sure that maybe these big trucks and whatnot are using that road rather than, you know, the residential streets. So at this point, that's really all I have.
Okay, thank you. I'll move on to Commissioner Halleck.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just a few things concerning the repair shop. As I see it in the lease, there's nothing detailing the repair shop under its current operational status. Now, just language indicating an agreement concerning normal operations. It doesn't seem to me that it says that it cannot take place. It doesn't seem that it can. Regardless, in my opinion, an operation of this type has absolutely no place in such close proximity to a waterway confluence to, that leads through Laguna Grande and outwards towards the beach. I think that it compromises the health of the creek itself, and the bay for that matter. So I think that staff is headed in the right direction with the stipulation of no mechanical repair. But I agree with Mr. Krieger that we should further that stipulation, that there be no storage in that area in, again, such close proximity to the creek, not be utilized whatsoever for small engine repair, storage, or any associated accessories, fluids, and the likes. So otherwise, on item number four of the staff report, we see a stipulation of clear signage. I utilize that trail quite frequently and others in the region. Oftentimes, in places like this, you'll find something indicative of natural hazards, enter at your own risk. It's certainly not ADA accessible. I'd like to see some sort of forewarning at either end and within that warns people of the natural hazards for public safety. And I think that that's relative to, again, number four, that the applicant shall maintain the public access trail. It's unclear to me whether or not that, that area is under the city's watch or the applicant's, and a little bit above my pay grade, but I'm concerned for issues of liability should some injury occur and who that would rest upon. So maybe a little foresight there would, would prevent any such problems in the future. I would also argue that the road, although it's a shared access, it is primarily used as an access for the nursery to serve their operation there. Mr. Maury has indicated that he's done some improvements on that road. And so I'm thinking that we should lean towards looking at that as additionally leased space also. And again, to be, to still be shared with the public. To that point, you know, overall, Mr. Maury has been a relatively good steward of this parcel, of Work Memorial Park, but it may have been before my time. I don't recall it coming before the planning commission, but there's extensive work that's been done there. There's a couple of culverts that have been put under the developed road. I don't have any knowledge. I don't know if we do have any hydrology reports, environmental impact reports and whatnot to ensure that groundwater and water percolation is following a natural flow and again, feeding and contributing to the overall well-being of the creek. I've done a little bushwhacking down there. I found the culverts. It seems like it's got proper flow. Some of the life seems to be thriving as Work Memorial Park comes back. But I'd like to see a little focus on that, and I'm sure that, I'm confident there will be in the future as you further address the project. So far as the hours of operation, I'm entirely for Mr. Maury being able to be open on Sundays throughout the year. My reasoning there is that in the off-season, it probably won't be frequent as much as it is in the spring or summer when people are gardening and planting as much. I'd like to, Mr. Hayward mentioned the hourly constraints. I'd like to see it put at a place where, to preserve the peace and quiet of the neighborhood and for church services in particular. I think that there shouldn't be any accessibility, that the business shouldn't be open until, I'd say reasonably about noon. And Sundays should be restricted to just general patronage and no heavy vehicle traffic, no transfer trucks, and that sort of activity. Is Mr. Maury present here tonight? I don't see him on the list. But I would like to say, if he is, and just for the record, that, you know, he gave us a beautiful presentation of some proposed ideas for Work Memorial Park. We now know that Fortag is, the trail is on the horizon. But I'd really like to see him continue his efforts in bettering the city, bettering the community by maybe collaborating with Fortag somehow in that area, in the surrounding areas, excuse me, around the Fortag Trail and such. I'd really like to see him still be a part of that, and I think that overall, his business is a great attribute to the city. That's all.
Okay, thank you. I'll move on to Commissioner Wood.
Hello, I have a few comments. The inside of the Garden Center looks fantastic, and like everyone else has said, it's the outside that we all need, no needs work. And I know this is part of the fence, right? This is, we're approving the fences currently built. Is that the case?
Yeah, Commissioner Wood is, it is as it is after the fact. The footprint that he is utilizing after the fact, part of its, part of its fence, part of its, you know, it's a hodgepodge of materials.
Right, and I was, that was my question, is are we saying that it's okay the way it is? Because I think it needs some modification.
I would, I would suggest, and this is a question I have for the city attorney, as I listened to Commissioner Krieger's comments about the, you know, the shed in, you know, moving that bar a little bit further than it is right now, is listed in number four. And for Alex, would that still fall into the scope of the recommended action? Because it does say impose conditions as appropriate.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think, I think the way it's worded is, you know, we're considering the after the fact permit, and we're considering the hours, but as conditioned, if it says as appropriate, you know, as appropriate conditions, then I think it gives us wide latitude to discuss what those conditions may be.
Okay.
And then I also believe that what we can do is, once we set the footprint, that during the lease negotiations, we can, you know, and this has already come up from several people, during the lease negotiations, the direction to staff, to myself, when we negotiate that and we speak further about the lease, we can put conditions about upkeep, appearance, things such as that.
Okay, would this be the appropriate time to talk about it now, the appearance and all the detail, or is that at a later time?
I think we can talk about it. This is your time.
Yeah.
Okay, so the fence needs to be redone. It looks, it looks like a temporary fence. All of the, all of the post should be the same height, at least stop at the top of the wire. And then I think somebody else mentioned about who maintains the trail in between the Garden Center and the access trail. And there's, there's a bunch of weeds back there, and I don't know if that's the city. And there's another spot I noticed too, and that's between the parking area and the church, that whole slope, kind of between the Butterfly Garden and their parking area. There's a whole mess of weeds there, and I don't know who's responsible for that. And then also, next to where the maintenance shed is, there's a shipping container. And I don't know who brought that, but I think it's an eyesore, and it probably should get out of there.
I am writing notes, and I will try and find out the answers, especially the maintenance answers. And if not, I'll find solutions to that, so that I just don't tell you who's responsible, but.
Yeah, yeah, I don't know either. And I don't know, maybe he has plans to fix the fence, but, you know, it, yeah.
And I'd like to take a second to apologize to Commissioner Hayward and Commissioner Wood. When I first said my greetings, you were on the next page, and I didn't even see you, so.
Oh, no worries.
Apologies.
No, no problem. And then, are there any other, we got one letter from Karen about a resident who's opposed to the Sunday hours. Has there been anyone else who's against that?
I do believe that we have some people who have concerns about those hours. And I've had some conversations with a couple of people. Some may have public comment tonight. And the feedback I'm getting is, you know, perhaps there's an outlet there when we do conditional hours, you know, no deliveries, things like that. So, but. So, but I'll leave that to the public in the comment if they've shown up.
Okay, and I think that is about all I have. All right.
Okay, thanks Denise. And now I'll move to Commissioner Krieger.
Yeah, okay. And first, I'd like to sort of echo what Commissioner Burton was saying. I, and the others, I love having Mori's place down there. It's, we try to frequent it as much as possible. And it's a great place to shop, people friendly, and most stuff too. So, you know, I think it's great to there. I do think though, that's important and incumbent upon us to make sure that, you know, we, we don't compromise anything else about, you know, as far as what we need in the city. So, but on the hours, I pretty much echo what was already said. I think, I don't, I personally just think the open on Sunday is fine. I think maybe you can negotiate those hours. And certainly the church is one consideration. Not having trucks come might be another one. But I think, I think that's certainly, from my standpoint, I, I think opening on the Sundays is fine. Well, you know, maybe we'll hear public comment on that in a minute. But I think certainly we could put limits on that if that helps. I think that not, the boundaries being stipulated before tag can come in, that's great. I mean, that's obviously, that's got to be in there. I would just reiterate again, I just think that we ought to push harder on the third thing. I think we have the chance to, you know, to get all that broken machinery. If you just go down and stand next to it, I mean, you can look at the ground. There's oil in the ground. I mean, it's just standing there. And there's broken machinery right there. And I don't think it's asking too much to move that stuff. I'm not sure, you know, and I was asking my questions. I pretty much knew, I was pretty sure I was going to hear. But I, so I think it's just one of the things that's sort of happened. It's happened, but I think we have an opportunity now to fix it. I think that, I don't think it's asking too much just to move all that machinery out of there. Certainly, as Commissioner Halleck said, if there's any fluids or liquids or things being stored, that's not an appropriate place for that. And find someplace else to move that stuff. And I, I think we ought to, I think we should push a little bit more than just saying, don't repair mowers. I think we can get a little bit more out of that. And I just want to make sure on the public access trails, that, so I understand that is, the city still really owns that, correct? I mean, we're asking, we're requiring them to keep it clean and the signs and all that. But that is still city property, correct? That's not in any way ceding me that over. That's a true statement, right? Like, if that's what the city manager?
It, it is city property. I have to look at the map really closely, but I think it's still in the area of the leasehold. You know, it's city property. I just don't remember exactly how far that line went over. There, without getting into the weeds, that's part of the problem with, with the lease and the arrangement that we have now is clarifying some of that. And there are a couple other line boundary issues that I need to work with the city attorney on that aren't germane to this right now. But I see that Erin has her hand up because she knows.
Yeah, okay, okay.
Thanks, city manager. And good evening, everyone. I think number four might need to be slightly reworded. I think it might be better stated and clarify if you said the applicant shall maintain access to the public trail. Because I think that, because the access point is within the lease's boundary, it's more of making sure people can access the trail versus him being responsible for maintaining a public trail. Does that make sense?
That would make, that would make a little more sense to me if you said that way, sure. Okay. Okay, great, thank you for clearing that. That's, I like that, thank you. And on the hours, with this, I believe Commissioner Hayworth did about the hours on the pickup on the trash. I was surprised they were picking up 5:30. I would be happy about that. I guess my question to you, city manager, do we have the ability to limit the hours? They can, they can dump those dumpsters? Or is that not something we can control? I just don't know. I mean, can we tell them they can't come pick them up until after? I know we have time limits on like when construction can happen. Can we tell Greenways to whoever does to come between certain hours? So they're not, they're at 5:30 in the morning dumping that thing? I'm just asking, I don't know.
If I may, through the chair, I'm not sure whether or not we have the ability to regulate that. But if it was something that waste management could work around, certainly we could put a provision in the canines permit or the lease that says, you know, you know, waste, waste to be picked up after such and such time each day.
I'm just curious. I didn't know if that's something we can control or not. But I know, I know I wouldn't be happy if I heard those things claimed at 5:30 in the morning. And just real quickly on the letter, as Commissioner Halleck was talking about it, I, he kind of hit on some of the things I was thinking as I was looking at that. I, I remember the history about why we booked the road in there and why we started coming in that way. But as I was reading this, and we started talking about building the road, and then I started reading about the drain pipes, I kind of had the same thoughts. What kind of process did we go through? Because I don't remember this ever coming to the planning commission. I mean, it kind of seemed like maybe it's a sequel kind of thing. Commissioner Halleck mentioned the hydrology, hydrological studies. I, you know, I was just, I was just curious what the history on that was. Because I was, as I was reading that, that sort of hit me that there's a lot going on down there that I don't ever remember, you know, coming here. So that may be something we need to take a look in the future. Exactly, you know, I don't know what we do about it, if anything. I was just curious how that much work was done without, it seems like there should have been permits involved or something. And so anyway, that was sort of my, my observation on that. Thank you.
Okay, thanks Gary. Now I'll go out to public comment. I see Ken Rutherford has his hand up. Please go first.
Thank you, I appreciate the opportunity. Ken Rutherford from Villa Verde. I have a few concerns. I think while we're talking about where the tenant is coming in and seeking modification of the lease, I would argue that every provision of the lease is relevant now to see what type of tenant he is and whether he's complying with the other provisions of the lease. And I would ask that rather than limiting the scope that you brought in the scope, and you say, well, let's talk about the terms of the lease and see if he's been complying. And, you know, I would argue that the expansion of the leased area is a violation, a substantial violation of the lease terms. Also constructing fences without a permit where it's clear in the lease that he needs to come to the city and work with the city and getting those things done are important. I think that the, talking about the hours of operation, there were provisions at the time this was agreed to where the residents that live on Rosita were told, look, this is what the hours are going to be. So there probably was not nearly as much opposition to this project going in at Work Memorial at the time because of no Sundays or very few Sundays, limited hours on Saturdays. Originally, the hours were going to stop at 4:30, and I think they had later got extended to five. But we shouldn't, we should remember, while there are only a few residents on Rosita that live there, it impacts their quality of life. We have families that are living there. And they moved there and live there with the understanding that the weekends are going to be a little bit quieter. And we're asking that the church services not be disturbed. Some are suggesting it start after 12:00. But we have residents that live there. They also don't want to be disturbed. And I would argue that we should not increase the days that that can be open on Sundays. Think about those neighbors. Think if you're one of the ones living on Rosita, what would you want? I think that the road is a very much a concern, the road that was constructed. I've gone back and looked since 2014, and I can't find any approval by the city council or the planning commission for that road. And I think that the expansion of, and using that road expands the leased area. The leased area was reduced to 1.97 acres, I believe, to allow it to go under a negative declaration versus a full sequoia EIR. That reduction talked about 75 cubic yards of soil being moved. So the location of the lease, while it looks interesting and somewhat confusing, is partly because of that. There was partial, portions of the leased parcel that had undisturbed soil and some that had already been disturbed. And so they were going to be using the disturbed portions and not going into the undisturbed. But now what we see is by the expansion, the unpermitted expansion of the leased area, there's been, I think, a violation of certainly the spirit of sequoia, which would have required an EIR. We have retaining, concrete retaining walls that are what, 10 feet high? Where the original proposal was having, I think, seven gravel and soil bins on the location of the parcel nearest Rosita. You now have 25 concrete bins, something substantially different than what was proposed. I believe what was proposed, if you look back at the plan that was submitted, even with the lease, there was a nice garden center with a walkway next to the creek, not with a big wall, making it a wind tunnel and a dark sort of dangerous area, but an open area to the whole garden center that was going to be accessible to the public. And I think we need to look at this expansion and ask, has sequoia been complied with? And are these creeping expansions of the lease, the creation of the road, just ways of getting around the sequoia requirements of an EIR? And I think that's what's happening. Maybe not intentionally, but it's certainly what has occurred in this situation. And since Erin's here, maybe she can address that. Would this have been allowed under a negative declaration if you have a road that's going to be blocking the water flow? Even though there are two culverts, it still changes the flow of the water? And this expansion of area, would, would we have been allowed to proceed with just a negative declaration or required an EIR? I would also say that, look at some of the other issues with respect to the tenant. Look at the signs. Under paragraph 17, he's not to have any signs. When you go to the garden center, all you see are these temporary signs for lawn mowers and different companies. So that's a violation. I know for a long time I lived on Rosita, they were having deliveries at 5:30 in the morning. They put the road in to accommodate that, but that should not have been the solution. A new road through the wetlands was not a solution for traffic coming at 5:30 for deliveries. I noticed that the diagram presented also, that shows the blue areas that are no longer in use, I would take issue with. I think he's trying to reduce the amount of leased space to justify the negative declaration in sequoia. But again, the path that's in blue there is part of the leasehold that he's required to maintain. And the area just above the traffic circle, the little, the cove, that's the area that, that his customers park in. So it's also used space. So we shouldn't allow him to pick and choose what areas he wants to use. These are areas that he's already agreed to use. He just wants to expand that. Again, I like the garden center. I don't know Mr. Mori myself personally. I use the garden center, I go there. I think we can find a win-win situation for the city and for the business. But I would ask the city to carefully consider the deed restrictions in the Work Memorial Park deed. I don't believe it allows for this type of business. And I would ask us to strongly consider now, while we're renegotiating with Mr. Mori in this lease, reconsider what the actual deed restrictions are and whether we're being true to what we agreed to do when we took that land for free from the work family. And I have more, but with that, I'll stop. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Ken. So I'll move on to Pat Lintell and then to Douglas McKenzie, then Fred Watson. Go ahead, Pat.
Thank you, Scott, and Pat Lintell, Rosita Road. I would like to mention that Mr. Mori has violated his lease on many occasions. Back in the days of Dan Dawson, who was the city manager at the time, he would only leave, Mori would only leave the pathway open during the hours that he was open. That was in violation. It was supposed to be open from dawn till dusk. Mr. Mori said that he had a concern of theft because people coming through the pathway when he was still not open, that people would steal things. And he agreed to put up a fence to prevent this. He kept delaying putting up the fence and delaying and delaying, and not until the city finally removed, I mean, he controlled the lock to the gate. And so the city ultimately removed his lock and put a city lock on there. Shortly after that, the fence went up. But he, he was violating the time sequence there. And, and he has a tendency to tell you what you want to hear, and then he does what he wants to do, like the fence issue. He kept saying, I'm going to put it up, I'm going to put it up. And, but he never did until we, the city took action. And he has had product, his product in the pathway to Safeway until Dino finally had him remove that. And he has on many occasions had the lawn mowers, not only on the city premises, but out actually on the city street, which is a violation. And he's taken over as with no property which was not included in the lease. And he stayed open on Sundays way, way beyond his allocated 12 times a year, which he had agreed to initially. And I would like the planning commission to consider requiring all trucks and vehicles with trailers to enter the garden center through the road behind, behind the garden center and the Safeway instead of on Rosita Road. The landscapers with their trailers, they come in very, very noisy as they approach. And if they were required to come in through where the roadway behind Safeway, it would be nice to return Rosita to a residential street instead of a commercial street. Let's see, you know, I'm, I'm wondering if perhaps if there were a monetary penalty for abusing the lease, that Mr. Mori might be more inclined to operate within the lease's boundaries. That, to me, would be a big consideration. I know he doesn't like to pay penalties and all. And I think if we could have some way of forcing him to pay penalties when he does choose to violate the lease. And I like the garden center and I enjoy shopping there, as many other people do. I just wish that Mori would become a better neighbor and abide by the rules and regulations that he has agreed to. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you, Pat. I'll move on to Douglas McKenzie.
Thank you. I'm Douglas McKenzie from 16 Rosita.
South Salsito.
Oh, Salsito, sorry, I'm mixed up. I have a list here and it's not on. And I'd like to speak against allowing Mr. Mori to annex, annex any more land than he already has. I don't, I agree that that's a quite substantial violation of the lease. Furthermore, I don't consider that the road that's behind there is a trail. Nor do I consider the path around near the creek, the garden center, a trail. It's really, it's more like a haunted trail back there. That's how I experience it. Furthermore, he has a pile of rubble there that's been there for as long as I've been around. It hasn't been that long, but still. Furthermore, as I understand it, Mr. Mori pays $3,000 a month in rent, which I consider quite low. I wonder, I think that ought to be reconsidered during the renegotiations. Lastly, the lease does provide that the premises shall not be used so as to create a nuisance. And I think it's arguable that the condition with the lawn mowers and such is definitely a nuisance. And that's it, thank you.
Hey, thank you for your comments. I'll move on to Fred Watson.
Thank you, Chair Donaldson. My name is Fred Watson. I'm one of the founders of the Fort Tag Project, and I'm also a professor at CSU MB. As many of you know, the area we're talking about includes one of the first segment of Fort Tag that is to be completely designed and constructed. We have funding for that segment. Kansas City is just finalizing a contract with a consulting team to conduct more public outreach and finalize the design. The design should be finalized by April of 2022 with construction bids later that year. I've walked this area with Mr. Mori a couple of years ago. I walked most of the Fort Tag route in Dory Oaks with city manager Hoyn about a month ago. I walked the area with Sustainable Dory Oaks Representatives about a year ago. And I've studied the area of the hydrology of the area fairly extensively with my students, with a lot of field work, doing survey of the terrain in the wetlands there and computer models that are estimating the frequency of inundation of that landscape in order to better understand where to put Fort Tag in order... in order to better understand where to put Fortag in order for it not to be flooded from time to time. As Fortag proponents, myself and Scott Waltz have always been big fans of the idea of Fortag and a landscaping center working together harmoniously in this kind of a landscape and benefiting each other. But echoing some of the ideas that have been mentioned so far this evening, I, I think there's some details that need to be covered better. I'm not totally sure if, if this meeting now is the time to address those details or if they're being deferred to some future action. But whenever the details are to be addressed, here's some that I think are important. I think the packets for meetings need much better information. We need to have the original lease documents. We need to have maps that are readable and not grainy scans. New maps need to be generated that better show the relationship of things to each other. So we can see where, in, in detail where the current facilities are in relation to the lease boundary, in relation to the Fortag alignment as it appeared in Fortag's Sequo document. We need to see more closely the relationship with the creek, the relationship to the wetlands, and the FEMA floodplain designation that I think is there. We need to see the relationship between the original lease and any new lease boundary on the same map. Also, with the, the current physical footprint of the facility, it's, it's really hard to figure out those things right now. You, you have to kind of in your head overlay the maps that are there and other maps that we're aware of to try to see how it all connects together. And just one last point, as far as I am aware, most of that access road was constructed from scratch by the applicant in about two thousand fifteen. Before then, there was the stub of a road at one end and a bit of a stub of the road at the other end. But right across the wetland there, that was all brand new road. And I've not been able to find any environmental documentation that went along with that. And so I would, I would think the city would need to be pretty careful in kind of, you know, moving forward without fully understanding where it stands with respect to potential environmental impacts of what's going on there. When you've got, you know, a road going essentially through a wetland. But overall, like everyone has said, you know, I think it's, it's great to have the garden center there. It's a great facility. It'd be, be great if we could figure out a way to make sure, you know, this forward with a, you know, a good understanding of what needs to be done and what's being proposed. Good assurance that we can make it all work together. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Fred. I'm going to go next to Karen Harris and then Kim Shirley. So go ahead, Karen.
Hi, Chair Donaldson and commissioners. I live on Rosita Road, and I wanted to share that several things. Most, well, primarily, Mr. Maury has been very positively collaborating with the Butterfly Garden with Sustainable Dory Oaks. And I appreciate all his efforts to support the Butterfly Garden. I'm glad that the conditional use permit will give Fortag trail priority. And I encourage discussions with Mr. Maury in the future. Because that's a, really a wonderful asset for our community. I'm concerned about the machine shop. There are storm drain drains right, right, there's a storm drain right in front of the machine shop. And there's lawn mower gasoline tanks right above it. And I believe that's in violation of their, the permit, or their lease anyway. And so I'd like to have that addressed and support everything else that the other council people have suggested, shared, and also the public regarding that, because that is a real issue with me. I, I believe the lease says no flammables or toxics. And I, and we need to comply with the Monterey County Health, Environmental Health Regulations and the city's stormwater permit. So I think that should be a part of the lease agreement as well. And the truck through the watershed, Truck Road, that road, I, I don't know how that was approved. I mean, that was brought up earlier. I believe that we should include the environmental protection in the watershed as part of the lease and include that road as part of the lease agreement if we are going to go ahead and approve that, continue using that, that road. I, I believe that it has been helpful because we don't want bark and sand and dirt and everything being left on Rosita Road, plus it's loud. So I understand why we have that road through there. But at the same time, I'm wondering, was that even allowed in the lease agreement to start with? I mean, having these large trucks and that kind of operation at that location. And operating times, I, I really appreciate that Commissioner Jeremy, call you by your first name, brought that back up about keeping it quiet for church services and residents that live in the area, that we want to make it, keep it quiet on the weekends. Not, maybe not just Sunday, but maybe the whole weekend, but we don't want to have these large trucks coming through. I don't know how the zoning was approved for this. Has, I would like to see the city post the zoning with the overlays, especially the C one V that allowed this zoning approval. It seems to be just not in step with what our zoning map is officially on the website. The safety of the foot trail. The trucks make it really unsafe. When you're walking down there, these big old trucks come through and it's very intimidating. It just doesn't seem like a foot trail at all. And the cinder block wall makes the trail dark and seems really uncomfortable. And I don't know if that was part, you know, agreed upon plan with the city. But I think we need to look at all future construction and even what's already been done, including that cinder wall, cinder block wall. And I was also looking at the well water use. I mean, that's a really great resource for this garden center. And it, it's a good use for, the property is, is a perfect place for Mr. Maury using that well. But who reviews those well water records? I'd like to look at them, see them, make them public. I'm interested in how much water is being pulled from that well and if the city has any desire to use the well in the future and install another well. But also the enforcement, and I think the city needs to continue, or I'm glad we're looking at it now, to enforce the encroachment and expansion that are outside the permitted area. So I'm really concerned about the Butterfly Garden because there has been some expressed interest by Mr. Maury to expand into that area for his retail operation. And I want to make sure that the city keeps on top of that so that that doesn't happen without public participation and discussion. And as, like Ken was mentioning, I believe, or maybe it was Douglas, I'm sorry. The rent, three thousand dollars, I mean, that's just seems like a bargain at this rate. I don't know how that was established, but I'm interested in how the rent is established. And I do, just to conclude, I, I really like Mr. Maury and his principles in protecting the environment. And he has good, great plans for the future that we can collaborate with him. And I know that we can make it really beautiful for our city. But we just need to work together and make it a public participation process. And I thank you for your time.
Okay, thank you, Karen. I'll move on to Kim Shirley.
Thank you, Commissioner Donaldson and the rest of the commissioners. Karen Harris just did a fabulous job with her comment. She pretty much covered everything I think I'd like to say. I just want to, I want to thank Commissioner Krieger for talking about the cleanup in terms of that where the repairs are done. Commissioner Wood, thank you so much for talking about just the front of the area. And just as Karen was saying, I think Maury does provide a service for our residents, and it's nice having him there. But it would be great if we could collaborate and make this sort of a win-win for both of us. Commissioner Halleck, thank you so much for also bringing up the Hall Road and incorporating that into the lease area. Myself, just like others, I'm not sure how that road was built within a wetland without any kind of environmental work being done. So I really hope Erin can address that later. And then also, as Karen mentioned, you know, Maury has free use of water, and water is a super valuable resource. And I, I don't know how much we have, how much he uses. So as Karen mentioned, I'd also like to see some reports out on how much water is there and what he's using. And, and, and make it in the lease so that it's very clear. Because according to the lease, it makes it sound like that well water should be used to keep the premises nice. But not, I, I'm not, I'm unclear if it actually should support the plants within his business. So I think that needs to be clarified a little bit more. But I, I want to thank the commission for taking these comments and for having a good, healthy discussion tonight. So, thank you.
Okay, Kim, thank you so much. What I'm going to do is kind of bring it back to what we're looking at here. You know, with the conditional use permit. And really, look at the first item is the additional Sundays. And there's some great feedback from the commissioners and the public. I think with that, city manager, take a look at finding a balance there. You know, we obviously have concerns about the start time being around the church. I completely understand that. So take a hard look at that. The waste pickup was also mentioned. And I, I don't think there should be any deliveries allowed on Sunday once you get the hours to where it makes sense and provides that balance. I guess I should back up and also echo that I think Maury and his garden center has been a good thing for the community. He's been a really good partner, not only in bringing revenue into the city, but also some of the things he's done for the community. I mean, I know two charitable efforts that he's made with the Butterfly Garden and also the Oak Tree Program. So I, I'm glad we have Maury there. And I think, you know, we should do our best to find an agreement that not only benefits the city, but, but also helps Mr. Maury to continue to do what he does in the city. So that, those were my comments on the, the Sunday piece. And, and let me go through the rest before I turn it back to the commissioner so we can give a little bit more clarity and guidance to the city manager. The second one is the boundaries on the Fortag Trail. Definitely it needs to be in there so that Maury's aware, whatever route that Fortag Trail takes, that he's got to accommodate that. I mean, we're a long ways away from determining specifically where that trail should go. And I know there's going to be a lot of public outreach to where the public can provide their opinions on not only the location, but also the design of that trail. But I think it's very important that we have that as part of the lease. The other part of the boundary situation, and it was brought up, I think Denise brought it up in terms of, should we allow him to actually maintain the, the fencing and the bins that he has there, or, you know, should we have him move it back? And I think also in that discussion should be the environmental impacts on that. So if we decide that he's allowed to keep the additional area that was not in the original lease boundary, then not only does he need to pay for a survey to reestablish that boundary, but also any, any environmental impacts he's going to have to take care of as well. Now, as far as the lawn mower and the mechanical repair, a lot of great comments there. I agree that it should not be permitted. And also, I think it's reasonable that he has to move that equipment out of there. There's a lot of concern, not only about the creek, but, you know, just overall usage of that shed. And maybe we can even take it as far as potential removal of that shed altogether. So I, I think there's been some great comments on that. And then also the access trail, Erin brought up a great point about rewording that, that he maintains access to that trail. And then Denise made some, some great points as well about the overall aesthetics along that trail. I think some improvements could be made. And also, it could be stipulated in there that he maintains a certain level of, of maintenance along that trail for aesthetic purposes. So those are my comments on the four items that are there. Before I send it back to the commissioners, I would, I would like to allow Erin to discuss any of the environmental impacts in terms of not only where he has pushed his boundary to, and also if you have any comments about the, the road that leads in to the, to the garden center from back by, by Safeway. I know there's a lot of concern about that as well. So Erin, I'll, I'll turn it over to you.
Great. Thank you, Chair Donaldson. And again, good evening. Really good, good feedback and input. I've been taking notes rapidly on, on your concerns because from the get-go, you know, as the city manager and, and city council have explained, we're trying to make square the encroachment that has occurred, and, and it's shown in the blue in the map. And again, I totally agree with, with Fred Watson on the maps. City manager Hoyn and I have been going through these maps and trying to figure out what was before and what was after. So we're definitely going to move forward and, and try to get some, some clarity here. But looking at where he has encroached and the fence itself is not a significant environmental issue. But looking back at these terms and the renegotiation of, of these hours, the lease boundaries, the lawn mower, all of these renegotiated terms, we will be looking at very closely to analyze the potential environmental impacts. I did go out to the site with, with city manager Hoyn last, last Friday. And yes, that, that lawn mower show is very concerning adjacent to the creek. We really want to get a spill prevention plan in there and get it cleaned up. Talk about additional protective fencing. We have a lot of good ideas. And unfortunately, I don't know how that Hall Road got there either. So I, I think that we really need to consider going backwards to that and looking at whether to include that in the lease area. And it seems like that might be an appropriate resolution and maybe retroactively mitigating for, for some of those impacts. All of the culverts there, I'd love to get a better understanding of the, how the hydrology has been impacted. We are in a flood zone. And so I look forward to coordinating with Dr. Watson on the, the data that he has put together. So thank you for bringing that up. So I think the bottom line is, we really want to get this squared away. We want to make it better. I mean, everything from aesthetics, noise, traffic, biology, hydrology, we're, we're there to, to look at all of these renegotiated terms. And we will come back with you and we will make a sequel determination on what that looks like. So I, I think I had quite a spiel saved up for you, but hopefully I answered questions. But please let me know if you have more.
All right, Erin. Thank you for that. Really appreciate it. So what I'll do now is go back to the commissioners before we entertain any type of motion on this conditional use permit. So any planning commissioner with additional comments or questions? Commissioner Krieger?
Sure. Okay, I was going to say, I don't think, I don't think there's anybody voting on any of us tonight. I mean, there's so many, this has been incredible. I mean, this has been so enlightening. There are so many questions. Some of them directly impacting the, the one, two, and three, and four and the, that we're being asked to conditionally approve some peripherally. But my goodness, there's just a lot that we don't know right now. And there's a lot of things to look at. I, I really think that, you know, if I get a chance, I'm going to make a motion that I, I would certainly support one, that we just take the same back and do some more, a lot more work on it and come back when we got better answers. I, I don't even know how we vote on this. I mean, there's just so many questions that we brought up tonight. I, I'm sure we're going to be having, the city managers are going to be having to go back through the going to have to go back through the, the recording of this just to get them on. I don't think, I don't think you could have got them all written down as we were going through. There are so many of them. So that would be my comment. I don't, I don't see how we move forward to anything tonight. I mean, we, we got a lot more to get sorted out here before we, I think, move forward to anything. That'd just be my comment.
Okay, before I move on, just, just to kind of give you a perspective here, when I originally said, hey, let's make sure we focus down in on what the planning commission needs to do here, you have to keep in mind that the city manager negotiates leases all the time. And there, there are certain conditions that are taken into account that are not part of the purview of the planning commission. The items that are before you today are part of the planning commission's responsibility. So Gary, definitely, there's, there are a lot of issues that planning, that the city manager is going to need to take into account as he renegotiates this lease. There's no question about it. But what I'd like to do is focus the commissioners down on the items that are there that pertain specifically to the planning commission. So with that, are there any other planning commissioners? Go ahead, Commissioner Burton.
Good evening again, everyone. My comment is about patching things. Today, we have an opportunity to patch four separate items by, by approving this conditional use permit. It will, I, I think it will show good faith to the businesses that's there. But it also, we can send a signal that when we, when we renegotiate, we're going to look at these other details in much greater, much greater depth than perhaps we even have in the past. So my thought here is get these patches on the pipes that are leaking. Get these on. And if we want to add more, the city manager, as he goes along, as he's thinking through this lease, the city manager can say, hey, and I have a couple of other ones that the planning commission needs to consider. Or if we, as the planning commission, come up with more conditional uses, conditional use rules, that's what these are. There is not, this is not the lease negotiation stage, just like Scott just said. So my recommendation is that we go ahead, get these patches on the pipes, then really redouble our efforts on the lease. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Doug. Any other commissioners? Go ahead, Commissioner Hayward.
This really is all good stuff and lots, you know, lots of things that an individual wouldn't even think of. So it's good to have a group that's this thoughtful. I think that, I think that the city managers heard plenty to use to negotiate with Maury. But I think that as far as the Sunday thing is concerned, I think we need to be firm in that we, there's no large delivery trucks that come, I would even say Saturdays. I think that they should be able to plan their inventory far enough in advance that they should be able to handle that during the week and not to use the front entrance, but to enter from the back. And the, the well thing too, I don't know. Kim Shirley made some good comments about that. And I think that that's probably something that should be looked at too. I saw that there and it didn't even really occur to me. So anyway, yeah, thank you, everybody. And curious to see how the lease negotiations work out.
Okay, thanks, Mike. Any other commissioners? Go ahead, Denise.
So I have a little comment about no deliveries on Saturday or Sunday. There's people just who work during the week and that's the only time they can get a delivery. So I think maybe Saturday only and only use the back, the back road. But no deliveries on the weekend. I like to utilize those as well. I know quite a few, few people who do. But maybe just Saturday, maybe just the back road. But I, it would be, it would, some kind of delivery on the weekend would be a good idea. And then I did have one more question too about the boundary. It's kind of where that little dog leg, that's kind of on the, I guess that would be the northwest side. How, how come that's there? Does anyone know?
Are you referring to up at the top towards CDR, the little cutout?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So, oh, that's the overage. I'm sorry. But why wasn't that included in the first place?
That, that's one of the things I noted when Erin and I walked the property on Friday. Of course, having not been there originally and not knowing how some of this was written out and, and, and having all the documentation, there's a, there's an older paved small road there. I didn't walk all the way up to the top to the, as you're looking at the map to the right, the right-hand side of that portion closest to the, closest to the tennis courts, I would say. Currently where he is encroached is, or he's encroached in that area. On the left-hand side, there are some storage containers. Maury's explanation in, in, it's the best I got and found historically was that they looked at the topographic map there and thought it wasn't really usable because of the topography there.
Gotcha.
Right. But he has, he's found a use for it. And I would, as, I'd like to just add on with what Denise said about checking out, we went to specifically, our biggest concern was the environmental impact of the encroachment. And I'd like all the citizens who commented to know that that's the main reason we went out there. And my biggest concern, the largest part of the encroachment is, is actually that area that has, that has pavement and was already partially developed there with, you know, concrete and things like that.
Okay. Thank you.
Hey, any other commissioners, comments, questions? Okay, one of the things that I would like to ask either city manager or attorney, won't this lease agreement need to be approved by the city council?
It, it will, Chair. It'll, it'll, because it, it concerns city-owned property, it will have to be approved by the, by the city council.
Okay. So, city manager, I think all of those comments, very, very good comments by commissioners and the public, need to be incorporated into that lease. So the product that goes in front of the city council reflects that. But once again, what I would like to focus in on now is the business of the planning commission specifically. And what we have before us is this conditional use permit. So what I'd like to do is entertain a motion from any of the planning commissioners out there.
I move, we accept the, accept this as presented with the city manager taking into account all of the comments made by the citizens and the planning commission.
Second.
Okay, we, we have a motion and we have a second. What I'll do is Karen, if you could do a roll call on this.
Certainly. Commissioner Halleck?
Aye.
Vice Chair Hayward?
Yes.
Commissioner Burton?
Yes.
Commissioner Wood? Commissioner Wood?
Yes.
Commissioner Krieger?
No.
Chairman Donaldson?
Yes. Okay, with that, the motion passes. So yeah, the, the key piece of that is that the conditional use permit will pass, but there are a lot of items that still need to be included in that lease agreement before it goes to city council. Okay, I'll move on to the next item on the agenda. It's item number seven, which is announcements and comments by planning commissioners. Any comments? Okay, oh, Commissioner Burton.
I just wanted to say, everybody that tuned in to this meeting, thank you, every one of you. This is exactly the type of interest we, we brag about in Delray Oaks. This, this is what makes our community what it is. So thank, thank you, every one of you. And we need to get that lease right. And if he's breaking rules and ruining the water, we need to stop that and knock it out of the park. So thank you, every one of you.
Great comments, Doug. Appreciate that. Commissioner Hayward?
Yeah, I agree with Commissioner Burton. And also, thank everybody. I also wanted to thank everybody that ran for office for the city. I know that's a, that's probably a real, real ordeal. And I want to thank every one of you for staying involved in what you did. Thank you very much. Appreciate it very much.
Okay, thank you, Mike. Commissioner Halleck?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You know, a big part of the focus this evening is about overstepping on the part of business owners, developers, contractors, darn those guys. But I want to bring up an issue that I've encountered as of late. As many of you do know, I am a general contractor myself. I've recently performed some service and repair work within the city. And there's some correlation between a project that we had several months ago. There was a contractor that, we did an architectural review on a deck where there were concerns within the view shed and privacy concerns of neighbors. We outright asked the contractor if they had petitioned the surrounding neighborhood, discussed the project, the scope of the work with their neighbors, and they assured us that they had. The aforementioned client of mine that I work for is actually within that view shed. And it is not the case, in fact. It's with some dismay that I'm reporting that she never had any such communication with that contractor. And her privacy is significantly impacted and she's highly upset about it. And in my opinion, if we have one member of our community that's not entirely satisfied with it's just one too many. I guess the point that I'm making here, and I showed certain scrutiny against that contractor that day, that meeting rather, because he had hastily gone ahead with the process of his, his project without gaining the proper approval, without the necessary inspections, and so on and so forth. And I just get the sense that as tonight's issue focuses on, and this issue that I'm mentioning, that oftentimes the city's leniency and accommodation may sometimes be taken for granted. We're, we're, we're very accommodating. We make it very easy for, for people to go through the process of getting approval for projects. And I just think that that's been taken for granted. Maybe we've been taken advantage of it. And I'd like to say that, you know, in the past, far before my time, I realized that this body has primarily been an architectural review committee. We look at retaining walls and fences and relatively minor projects, but we've got a lot more on our plate these days. We're going to be looking at a lot larger projects. And I think that it's going to require due diligence and a closer eye on these things. And, you know, perhaps put some system into place where we ourselves are more thorough, checking surround, the areas surrounding projects. I know a lot of times if I see neighbors out and about and I have an opportunity, then I will engage them. I don't necessarily knock on doors. They may not be privy to, even though it's, it's, it's noticed on our local bulletins, it's posted. Some people may miss that. They may not be familiar with the channels that they can go through to contest any project that might impact them. They may not be familiar with appeals processes. Other cities, I know that the, just for example, signage has to be placed within a quarter mile radius around a, a proposed project so that, so that the immediate neighborhood is aware. So I think that it'd be important to, to just be a bit more diligent about that to ensure every member of the community's happiness and welfare.
All right, Jeremy, thank you. Any other comments from the commissioners?
I'd like to congratulate, even though they haven't been sworn in yet, the two new councilmen, or councilwomen, councilmen. And hope everybody else has a nice Thanksgiving coming up. That's all.
Okay, George, thank you. And I, I would just like to echo the comments that have already been made. I really appreciate the public's participation and your comments. Some great stuff for the city manager to take into consideration as he pulls together this lease. So thank you so much. And as always, thanks to the planning commissioners for what you do. We don't get paid for it. And thank you for doing what you do. So with that, our next meeting is the ninth of December at 6:00 PM. And this meeting is adjourned.
Say goodnight, Nick.
Goodnight. Happy Thanksgiving, everyone.
Good night, everybody.